I'm sorry that we're late in the meeting downstairs. We have, I just wanted to explain public comment because it is an athletic presentation and I know that folks would want to comment on that. So, I'm going to take general public comment now and then if you have specific things about the athletic presentation, I'd like to run through that. School committee has first comment, then I'll open it up to the floor about the athletic review. So, we usually just take public comment before beginning and at the end, but we'll take it after the athletic presentation for specific questions on that. Okay? So, is there any general public comment that folks have that they want to address? Great. I'm delighted. Now, we're going to move down to the athletics review right away of the tent. So, the folks who want to, we asked the folks who were presenting to come sit at the table with us if they think it's friendlier. So...
If I stand by my...
You can stand wherever you'd like. And your name is Nancy O'Neil. Great. Any folks who need to sit down? Great. So, do you want to frame this at all for us or do you want...
I can defer to...
If you'd like to, but basically, I mean... I'll start and kick it over to you. This came out of conversations that, Nancy O'Neil has done us a great service. She came in and did a party review of our college program for us. This came out of conversations we were having at school committee level last year about we had to look at the fee and raising it to keep costs with cost of living adjustments with budget, but at that time other questions came up that I think equipment quality control and basket. So, we connected with Nancy and we wish to report to be done this fall. And Tricia has really worked with her one on since then, so if you want to provide any commentary?
Sure. No, I think our program has grown pretty broadly over the last five to seven years and we had a change in structure and we're wondering about how we were working with that. So, we've been very fortunate to be working with Nancy who is tremendously knowledgeable in terms of athletics, having been athletic director for a long period of time. It feels that we went into the classes very transparent and are really, really excited to work with the recommendations such as being forward to us today. So, I'm going to hand it over to Nancy and it's been a pleasure. She's been great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It really is a terrific honor and an opportunity to be here with you folks. There's no question in my mind that this is one very impressive community. I, kudos go out to Pam and to Tricia. It's not easy opening yourself up to such an assessment because everybody's got opinions and it's emotional. Athletics is emotional. So, I have great respect for school systems that are willing to do this. Given the number of youngsters that participate, it makes sense. It is a co-curricular activity. A lot of folks are involved and so it's a great testament to this institution that they're willing to open themselves up and look at better ways to improve this program. I'd like to make a couple of highlights, some positive comments about those that manage the athletic program. It's not, it's not easy. It's a very challenging, a lot of moving parts athletics. And Barbara Driscoll, aka Muffin, is a very impressive, fiercely dedicated woman, hardworking, knowledgeable, and a person of detail. And details make champions, particularly in the realm of athletics. Details make champions. And so, I would say to you in this regard that Muffin is a bit of a champion. I'd also like to say to you that athletics is a fishbowl. It's visible. It's your most visible program in your institution. And so, people like to weigh in and in many regards, everybody's a coach. It's difficult. It's, it's challenging. It can get heated. It gets very emotional. And so, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Paul Murphy as the athletic director is a very calm, measured, and positive individual. And I'll tell you, you can't put a price on that when it comes to interscholastic athletics. So, I thought it was very important to highlight those things. I'd like to give you a quick, just a quick snapshot of my own personal background. I was a three-sport high school athlete, a three-sport division one college athlete and captain. That tells you how old I am. And was very fortunate, right off the bat. I knew what I wanted to do for my career and I've done it and I've loved every bit of it and still do. And I was fortunate enough to coach, you name it, I've coached it. I've coached basketball, lacrosse, field hockey, volleyball, softball, tennis at the high school and collegiate levels I've coached. I spent the majority of my career as a director of athletics and wellness programming and a variety of terrific institutions. So, I've been very fortunate. And like I said, there are things about youth sports that I think we all need to pay attention to. I love youth sports. I'm not a huge pro fan. I'm not a huge college fan, but I love scholastic and young people watching and participating. In fact, I have to share this little story. So, I come home one day and I'm, I'm watching on the way home. I see there's a little league game going on, so I decide to just stop and watch it. And I'm standing next to the right fielder. He's probably like, what, 11, 10 years old? And he's doing cartwheels and he's doing handstands and he's doing somersaults. And honestly, I'm not sure he knows there's a game going on. So, I say to him, "How's it going?" And he says to me, "Really good." I said, "That's great." He goes, "Yeah. It's 15 to nothing." And I go, "Oh, my goodness. 15 to nothing?" "Yeah." Somersault. And you know what? We haven't even gotten up yet. So, I don't want high school kids saying that. You don't want high school kids saying that. But I'm going to say to you, there's a common denominator between what this kid has said and what high school kids are looking for. And the reason youngsters participate in interscholastic educational athletics, number one reason, what do you think it is? Fun! Yes, to have fun. And, but that's a nebulous term. So, what does fun mean? It means I'm getting good at something. I'm getting competent. I'm skilled. I'm improving. I'm with my friends. I'm with my teammates. I'm getting fit, powerful, strong, quick. All of those things are fun. And you know where winning fell in the research? It didn't really come into play. It really didn't come into play. It didn't crack the top 10. And when it came to reasons for quitting sport, winning wasn't a factor either. So, they're telling us that's not the driving force. It's educational athletics. So, let me launch into my presentation, tell you a little bit about what an educational athletic program looks like. And there's a lot of great things here at Manchester Essex. And then we can talk about ways to improve. So, I know you guys are hornets, but I like this little dog. It's kind of cute. Oh, I just found, I snagged some pictures off your website. Okay, so this is what the, can you folks all see this all right?
He's going to get the ones.
Okay. So, what the research is telling us about participation in activities in general, there's a lot of benefits. So, this isn't just athletics, but you know, any, any activity of any sort. It improves academic performance and attendance. Behavior is improved. Students are more likely to go to college. I love this last, second last one. Participation is a better indicator of future success in life than GPA scores or SAT scores. I think that's true. And students are more likely to be leaders. So, these are all good things. But you know what? It doesn't happen by chance, folks. Programs have to be crafted in a special way. And when I was athletic director, I spent a lot of time with my school committee, my stakeholders, trying to explain to them, "Okay, here are the things that we're going to try to say are the outcomes of our athletic program." And I'm going to say to you, a lot of these outcomes, I've observed here at Manchester. We've got a lot of positive things going on. But the number one reason, the primary reason of interscholastic athletics, and if you walk away with nothing else here tonight, walk away with this, is to promote work. It's all part of an educational system and it's the number one reason. Okay? So, promoting learning and it's not just physical skills. It's social. It's emotional. Life skills. These are great things that youngsters can learn through participation in sport, whether it's, you know, leadership, personal growth, decision making, delayed gratification. Hey, you might not get that win or that, you know, that performance that you're looking for right away. You might have to work at it for a while. The struggle is good. Kids learn to appreciate the struggle when they're on teams. Healthy lifestyle. Oh, my gosh, look at the opioid crisis, right? So, if we can help kids live an addiction-free life, this, this is all part of the curriculum. Sportsmanship, respect. Respect for your opponents, for the officials, for the game. And then all these things culled together to hopefully provide youngsters with skillset that will make them good citizens in this world. Make them responsible. Okay, so, again, Pam kicked things off. I was really, you know, I can't say enough about schools that are willing to do this. So, there was a need. And I think, you know, the way that Pam sort of couched it to me was, "Hey, we assess all of our other programs. Why not athletics?" Absolutely. So, meetings were established with stakeholders. All of these stakeholders, I had the good fortune to meet with. Surveys were developed and were made available via a link and that link was left open for approximately 10 days. So, I would say to you, feedback from the surveys, from the stakeholder meetings, as well as my own observations became the basis of the recommendations. Wonderful strengths. Here are the strengths of the athletic program. Clearly, a vocal and caring support by many stakeholders. Most of the people that I met with, whether it be students, parents, coaches, faculty, staff, want to be part of the solution. And that's really admirable. Committed teacher-coaches who promote learning first and foremost. Solid participation rates, really great participation rates. And ample opportunities. And these are all solid foundational deposits. And I can't tell you, if these things were broken, you'd have something to blame. Okay, so I developed six domains for study for the recommendations. Role of the athletic director. Role of the middle school. Communication. Budget and fees. Facilities. And others. So, let's take a look at the role of the athletic director. Highly recommend a committee to evaluate the effectiveness of the current model of the assistant principal and athletic director. Is this in the best interest of the position? Does this provide for the best product for your students? It needs to be looked at. Develop better coordination and division of tasks between the athletic director and the assistant to the athletic director. The athletic, there's so many operational systems that go into an athletic program. And I would say to you, for most of my career, I was my principal, my superintendent, they probably had no idea what I did. In some ways, that was okay. But it's important that they, we have a united front with the athletic director, that they understand what you do and why. When tough decisions are made, make it collective work. Operational systems are key to the running of an athletic program. There's all kinds of systems. There's arbiter, which is for officials. There's online scheduling systems, on and on. And the athletic director has to be able to do these systems in the event that the assistant is not available to handle it. I had good fortune of having great assistants throughout my career. I'll say to you, there were times when my assistant was having surgery or, you know, a family member passed away. I had to jump in and be able to handle those systems. So, you know, it's something that an athletic director needs to do, should do. Assess the uniform condition and maintenance. Now, I'm going to tell you, as an athletic director for 30-plus years, this is a topic that everybody whines about. Nobody's happy with their uniforms. It's not uncommon. However, there was enough noise that I felt I should throw it out there. More importantly, make sure there are processes in place to determine when uniforms are replaced. A solid, defined, clear-cut inventory so that decisions can be made in a fashion, in a sensible fashion and in a timely fashion. So, there's a rotation of when to replace, when to purchase, when to get rid of. Assess the transportation decisions for safety first and foremost. There were a couple of issues that were brought forward, concerns relative to overcrowding on buses and whatnot. And it may just have been a couple of situations. However, I will say to you, with athletics, transportation is probably your second most expensive line item. And when I was at Lincoln-Sunderly in my last few years, it was very, very difficult. We went through some severe budget cuts. And essentially, I had to take a look at where can I make some cuts without eliminating programs? And what I ended up doing was working collectively with my all-sports booster club, purchasing a variety of 15-passenger multifunctional vehicles. They look like half a bus. And Lincoln-Sunderly probably has about four of those now. My athletic transportation budget went from $90,000 at the time to probably less than $40,000. You know, so, transportation is a challenge. You know, you're renting, you gotta have a, pay for a driver, you know? And there's pros and cons to having the vehicles. You gotta keep them up. You have, coaches have to drive them. You know, so nothing's perfect. However, for us, it was a solution. For us, it was a huge solution. And it worked out great. A lot of coaches liked it because they could stop and get ice cream, they could do whatever with the kids. They were more in control. Others didn't like driving it so much, but they were great vehicles and I drove them along myself. You know, so that's just an example of ways to think outside the box with regards to transportation. Establish a transparent and consistent evaluation process for coaches. In the appendix that I provided to the school with the report, I included a variety of what I consider to be really legitimate tools. The other thing I provided, hot off the press, national coaching standards that are outstanding. And it's just in draft form now and I've been fortunate enough to be on the committee that helps develop these for the, for the country. And I'm going to tell you, even in draft form, it's outstanding. I gave a copy of that to Pam with the appendix. I would be using it as a job description. I would be using it to help evaluate coaches. It is exceptional. So, I think we've come a long way. But the evaluation is important. Coaches need to know what they're doing well, what they need to improve upon. I'm going to stretch you to reach your potential. This is what I want you to do differently. Here's how I'm going to help you. I think it's really, really important. Reinforce expectations and process for site event managers. It's very difficult for athletic directors to cover everything. It sounds like you have a pretty good system of folks filling in to cover events. There was some confusion expressed to me, but maybe it was just, you know, a couple of situations. I thought at the very least, it might not hurt to reinforce what is expected of site managers. I provided a checklist. I'm sure you folks have one too, but it's something that is critical because there's a lot of moving parts to running a game, just as in, you know, throw the ball out and have at it. There's a lot of detail that goes into it. Conduct an annual analysis of the athletic program. You don't even have to do this with anyone by yourself. Sometimes just me as the A.D. will do this. I would take a look at, okay, what has changed this year? What's different? Are there financial constraints? Are there population shifts? Are there health issues? Are there things that I need to do differently in order to provide a safer, better product for kids? Involve coaches. Involve other people if you want. But at the very least, you as the athletic director, assess and take a look at what went wrong, what needs to do, you need to do differently and make adjustments. Revive some energy and enthusiasm for the position of athletic director. I am an athletic director. I am a professional athletic director. I went to school for it. I studied for it. I have a variety of certifications for it and I would get every certification I could get. I would take every class I could take. Certified Athletic Administrator through the NIAA. Certified Interscholastic Coach through the NFHS. Accredited Interscholastic Coach through the NFHS. I love taking courses. There's so many great free courses online through the NFHS. Conferences, workshops, whatever, networking. You know, your problem is not unique. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Another school's probably had the same problem you're struggling with. So, reviving energy, reading journals, you know, coach and athletic director, athletic business. I liked reading those journals, learning things. I think it's really important to just dive in and be the best professional you can be. So, put some energy into that and I think you'll learn a lot, you get excited to do Okay, role of the middle school. Create a task force that evaluates, refines, and reestablishes a clear and transparent role school program. Experiences for this age group must be developmentally appropriate. Kind of an interesting statistic is 70% of youngsters quit organized sport by the age of 13. 70%. It's not fun anymore for them. And that should be the age where they're training to train, they're learning how to train, they're learning fundamental skills, they're experiencing a wide variety of things. They're not specializing. You know, technically, the Academy of Pediatrics says that students should take off basically three months of the year from their sport. Three months out of the year. Nobody does that, right? Doesn't happen anymore. Or at the very least, take off two days a week where you're not training. Even that, in some schools, doesn't happen. 50% of injuries are overuse injuries. You know, middle school kids in particular need developmentally appropriate activities that are fun, where the focus is on learning, being with their friends, all of those things are a priority. Clearly define what you can realistically offer for middle school. Communicate it. This is what it is. Most schools do not offer very much at the middle school level. They just don't. And so, what can you realistically do? This is what it is. Publish, publish it, put it out there. That's it. You can't be everything to other people. You just can't. There is a feeling with some of the middle school students are used to fill some high school teams. You know, I think it's that, you know, transition from when you guys were a genuine middle school to high school situation and then you went to, you know, middle school with a principal and then high school with a principal. And so, they're separate. It's, you know, it's a little bit of the history probably catching up with you, but when I was at Lincoln-Sunderly, girls' ice hockey was struggling with numbers and I didn't want to co-op because there's challenges with co-opping and I didn't want to do that. So, we would bring up three or no more than four eighth grade girls to fill the team. I didn't like it. Honestly, I didn't like it. We vetted them carefully. We made sure they were good students. You know, we took care of them, kept things in perspective, made sure the high school girls knew how to treat them and, but it worried me. I didn't like it at all. I mean, it's a fragile age group, you know, and they care about belonging. They really care about belonging. So, you have to be very careful. Inter-bureals are great. It's an inexpensive way to provide activities for youngsters. And all the days that I came up here this fall, the gym was open. You could be running programs for middle school kids in the gym, low-key games units, basketball, all kinds of fun things. And it wouldn't be an expensive endeavor. So, that's just something to consider that I would highly recommend. All right, communication. Just about everybody that I spoke to had no idea what the philosophy of the program was. And there is a philosophy. It's in the handbook. It may be because it's in the handbook and it's not right on the website, front and center. But you know, look at your philosophy. Is it a living document? Does it really represent what you're all about? And one of the great things that I would do with teams is create covenants. And a covenant is a binding agreement and it's something you see in action. So, if Pam plays on the girls' soccer team and they come up with covenants for their team, as an outsider, I'm going to see those in action. I'm going to see them on her team. I'm going to see them in the cafeteria. I'm going to see them when they're in the halls, when they're on the bus. You know, it's a great way to put a face on a philosophy. And I've done plenty of workshops with coaches and teams on how to develop covenants, but it's an exciting way to define who you are and what you stand for. Reexamine the no-cut philosophy. Most of the folks that I spoke with felt that it would be okay to have cuts. I mean, define what it is, define the process, put it out there, be transparent. Because quite frankly, over-enrolled teams hurt instruction, cut down on participation, just like an over-enrolled class would be a problem. An over-enrolled team, teams or classes, they're just in a different venue. So, I think that's, you know, another piece of the philosophy that you might want to take a look at. Redefining the athletic council. The concept of an athletic council is tremendous. It's outstanding. It's a way to involve stakeholders, set goals for the program, measure those goals, reassess. Yet it fell a little short according to the stakeholders that I spoke. So, I think it's something that you can rejuvenate and you can really pin it down, define what you want to do and, and really, you know, take a look at the accomplishments and then at the end of the year, almost that. This is what we accomplished through the athletic council. Have coaches conduct team informational meetings prior to the start of the season. So, I want to try out for field hockey, but I don't really know too much about it. All of a sudden, I'm on the team. Here we go. It's really helpful for parents and youngsters to find out, hey, this is the expectation, these are the expectations of this program. This is our schedule. This is when we practice. These are the rules. This is what happens over vacation. Front-load everything and then you can decide. You can make an informed decision. Yeah? This is a good experience for my child. You know what? This doesn't work because we're going away on vacation and we can't commit. But doing it prior to the season is critical. The athletic website is a great vehicle. I think you could be doing a whole lot more with it, providing things, you know, get your philosophy on there. I've got a great document, role of a parent, helping parents to understand how to engage with their youngsters after a contest. We really, you know, after a game, what kids need. They don't need another coach. They need a parent. And it's emotional. You know, so there's all kinds of things you can put on your website to help stakeholders, to help students, parents. Feedback forms. I used to send out halfway through the season and at the end of the season, feedback forms to the student athletes and to the parents. And it was great. We would get all kinds of information and midway point, we could then make some changes. And the feedback form, and again, these are all included in the appendix that I, I turned over to Pam. You keep it simple. It's not about X's and O's because that's not a negotiable thing anyway. But it's about things like, the coach establishes an environment of mutual respect and understanding. The coach fosters social and emotional growth. The coach instills team spirit and cohesiveness. So, it's things like that, things like that that you should expect to have in the experience. It's great stuff and I used to love it. Hey, give me a feedback. Show me a better way. Push back. Give me some feedback. How can I improve? That's the center. So, soliciting feedback is important. Another thing I would do that I highly recommend is have a parent forum. Once a month, I would set up a meeting, open agenda. Parents, come if you want. Talk to me about what your concerns are. If you have things you don't understand and you need help, come and see me and let's have a conversation. Some nights I would get 10, 12 people. Some nights I would only... Some nights I would get ten, twelve people, some nights I would only get two. It wouldn't matter if I got none. The point is, you offer it. It's there. It's there for you to come and provide feedback and be heard. And I think that's key. Budget and user fees. So how do you like this? Athletics represents only one percent of the overall budget. Bang for the buck, not too shabby, right? However, as with most schools, user fees are sadly part of the landscape. And you know what? It's funny, I used to have conversations with parents. They're all willing to pay thousands of dollars for all these club sports, but they would be craving about the $365 user fee at Lincoln Sudbury. I feel like, you get more time, more opportunities, 365 isn't so bad, you know, but we're used to not paying, it's a shot. So I think it's important, whatever your user fee is, this is what it is, this is why. And I think that the school has tried to do that, and for whatever reason, a lot of stakeholders didn't quite, you know, get the information. So I think it's, you know, these are things you can also put on the website. And study the structure. Is the user fee model that you have the model that's best for your community? I can't answer that, I'm not sure. But I think it is something that, you know, maybe needs to be looked at. Why not? Explore corporate sponsorship. This was something I was starting to get into right before I retired. Corporate sponsorship, corporate partnership, call it what you may, but there's all kinds of opportunities for gaining funding. It's a philosophical thing. Do you want to go down this road? There are ways to do it in a smaller, you know, kind of fashion, or you can go big. In 2011, Gloucester High School sold the naming rights of their stadium to New Balance for $500,000. Now, you know, hey, I like the name, Nancy O'Neill Stadium. I might be willing to give a couple hundred dollars to pay for it. Here we go, let's, want to talk?
Yes.
So, I mean, there's different, what you want to do is you want to find businesses, corporations, you know, that are willing to maybe give back. And small communities, they want to give back. Some of them do want to give back, so you've just got to hit it right. You've got to find out what they want. Sometimes they're looking for a lot of foot traffic coming through that stadium, or maybe they're okay with, you know, just a couple of banners or something in your program. You know, there's all different things to look at. And potential is there, potential is there. And with, you know, the difficulty in funding athletics, the challenges, user fees, you know, things fluctuate. A lot of those numbers are soft. So, you know, hey, 500,000 for a stadium name, that would be so shabby. I am a huge fan of an all-sports boosters. This is not necessarily the charge of the school system, but in the end, it's such a win-win if you can do it. Galvanizing all your resources under the umbrella of one fundraising group. In fact, they could be the ones that broker the corporate sponsorship. I'll tell you, at Lincoln Sudbury, I would get a minimum of 50,000 a year through the boosters to do magnificent things. Buy vehicles, tons on coaching education. That was for me so important. Coaching education, my coaches were very, very knowledgeable, they attended all kinds of things. You want to go, go. National conference, go, go, we'll cover it. And we would do something to make sure everybody got a piece of the pie. So we did this thing every fall where all the leaders and captains from the teams, all the coaches from all seasons, met with the boosters, and they were given a form to fill out. And they knew all this ahead of time of the meeting. What do you need for your program that you don't have, that the athletic program can't provide? So they would fill stuff out, they would consult with me. Boosters would collect all these forms, and then they would meet with me. And we would go through everything, and I would make sure every team got something. Except for when my soccer coach asked for that port of body, I said, no, we're not getting that. But it was a great way to make sure everybody got something, and the boosters loved doing it. And it gave them a chance to talk to the kids about who we are and what we do, and everybody was in it together. So I highly recommend that. Utilizing bid lists, and this is something that really saved me a lot of money in the job, because I would send in a bid list in November for the spring, and then in May for the fall and winter. And basically on the list, I would just by sport, list all the things that we needed. Soccer, fifteen brine, I-32, blue and white. Two replacement McGregor nets, blah, blah, blah. And specify everything, and just list. I would say to the coaches, tell me everything you want. Give me everything you want, I'm putting it on the list, and then we'll figure out what we can afford. And the boosters would come into play and help too. But then I would send that list out to all my vendors, and it kept everybody honest. I would find it a great savings, and even my go-to vendors, the ones that I always go to, you know, they would get like ticked off if they didn't win a bid. I'm like, hey dude, you were not the good guy, you're not getting it. You know, so it kept everybody honest. It's very easy to just get on the phone and say, hey, you know, I need a dozen swallied basketballs. It's not the best way to do it. Okay, facilities. Maintain a regular cleaning and care schedule. I mean, this school is so clean, I have to say, I love coming here, it's really nice. Regular cleaning and care schedule for all athletic facilities, whether they are under the auspices of the high school or TAM. And that's where the athletic director has to get around and say, hey, we've got some issues, we've got a hole over here at Sweeney Park, or gym floor's too slippery over here, or, you know, like, you really have to keep on top of things. It's a full-time job, just keep it on top of the facilities. Most of appreciate the main gymnasium and the artificial turf field, but these are going to age. Eight years, you know, you're talking, that's when artificial fields start to look a little shabby. So you need to keep up with. Eight years, did you say? Have you guys been here eight years with that?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. It's about, that's about the usual lifespan, depending on use. It's a normal lifespan. But they are making good products. You know, I've heard a lot of concerns about Sweeney Park and Memorial, but I know that you guys are on top of it. But I get it, that's what we say. A lot of noise on noise. If there are other options in Essex, I don't know. I mean, does Essex have any other options to share, to spread the love? Look at all possible venues, all possible options. This is key, establishing proper protocol and signage for certain facilities. Several times when I came here, and I'll tell you, this was strictly observation, I would walk into the weight room, and there would be kids in there, no supervision. Wide open, wide open cardio room, wide open gymnasium. It is a nuisance, an attractive nuisance. There should be protocol listed in these facilities for behavior, safety precautions, those kinds of things. But the weight room in particular, I mean, those kids were just sort of flapping around when I was walking through, and something could have happened, and we would not have been there. So that's, that's critical. Okay, other topics. Navigating the college athletic scene. That's confusing. And so what I would do at Lincoln Sudbury is I would purchase a lot of the NC2A booklets, which are great, they're really easy to read and follow, to, you know, to hand out to kids to use. And then usually two or three times a year, I would have a speaker come in and talk about the college process, and help parents understand what to do, what's realistic, what's not. Included in the appendix is information on one-on-one counseling. I happen to think is a really great organization. The woman who runs it was a high school coach, and they come and lecture at schools, they can be helpful. But bringing in people like that, so parents can come with their youngster and hear the best way to sort of navigate the scene, I think is a great service to provide. All right, school spirit. I'm going to tell you, this can't fall on athletics. A number of people felt that, you know, there was a need for more school spirit. Let me reframe school spirit for you, because I think Manchester Essex is unbelievable with regards to participation. And sometimes you do not have spectators because kids are participating. And I'd rather have the participating than the spectating. So when you've got seventy percent or whatever participating, they're representing your school. They're, you know, stepping up and jumping in for the school. And to me, that's the ultimate school spirit. So if you really think you have an issue with school spirit, I think you might want to get a school-wide committee together to take a look at things that you can do to enhance it. But when everybody's playing, that's school spirit. I already talked about establishing an all-sports boosters. I gave a huge presentation on this done at the AD's conference one year. So I'm happy I included the information for Pam in the appendix. I think it's absolutely the way to go. I can't even, I have to say, the boosters mailed me out so many times. They were tremendous to work with, and that all-sports philosophy was just a win-win. The perception of football is the privileged sport. Again, the uniform situation, sort of the feeling of football gets everything. I mean, that's, there's some of that no matter where you go. And yet, we've got to take a look at some things, such as, the football uniforms are professionally cleaned, but no other sport program gets professionally cleaned uniforms. Why? I mean, I think you have to explain that. If it's because an outside group, like a gridiron club, is paying for it, it doesn't matter. We're still creating the haves and the have-nots. Consider providing rosters. I used to provide rosters for a lot of the home gates, just one sheet front back with the students and their members. It's a great way for, you know, people to be able to know who's who, regardless of the sport, not just football. The Nantucket trip, and I'm going to tell you, football's hard to schedule. And at Lincoln Sudbury, you know, people didn't want to play us. We had to play Somerset. Somerset? Where the heck is Somerset? So I understand scheduling can be a challenge, it's tough. So if the football team is playing Nantucket, because you've got to fill a schedule, and that was the best you could do, just explain it, put it out there. If it's for fun, then yeah, you're going to have some other teams that are jealous of it. They want to have that kind of fun. So just something to do. Does football get priority on the main field? That's a perception. I don't know how real it is, but that's a perception. It's such a nice big field, you can even put multiple teams on there at once. I would have two teams practicing on there at once. We're overlapping. You know, girls' soccer comes on full half an hour, then two hour and a half, there are a half a field. You don't need a full field, you have good practicing. So there's ways to get creative about how you use the space. Or creating a couple of Friday or Saturday night double headers, so that everybody gets a little love on the main field under the lights. Press coverage, that's, you know, that's a tough one to manage. You know, there's issues that only football gets covered in the paper. But you know what? I found that if you find people who can write an article, like a parent or a student affiliated with a team, your local papers will print it. You know, if you can just find someone to do that, you know, you can get everybody in the news. There's always requests for additional teams. I want cheerleading, or I want volleyball. So what I did is I included in the appendix, like a rubric, a process for deleting and adding teams, and, you know, having a committee follow that rubric, and just really kind of have a good conversation about what makes sense. Questions about the overall health of the football program, you know, given that situation with head injuries and concussions, low numbers. You know, again, I would say, take a look at it using the rubric. Does it make sense? I mean, football's a big part of most athletic programs. So it's something that needs to be studied. However, it should be done so purposefully, following some sort of rulebook. So final suggestions. Develop a strategic plan for reviewing and acting upon each accepted recommendation. Appoint a standing internal athletic implementation committee, charged with developing timely, comprehensive implementation strategy. And the membership of the committee can vary, but certainly should have the AD, finance, business manager, and principal. And then the plan should be communicated clearly and openly to the entire community. So, those who make things happen, Manchester Essex. Those who watch things happen, not you guys. And those who say what happened, certainly not you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. If you could, Trish, kind of just talk a little bit about what we're going to do. You've got this report now, so what's, what are the next steps? And then we'll take school committee comment on this.
Sure. Having talked to Nancy at length and read the, read the report, and have, we've a lot of work ahead of us as a school district and a community to improve our athletic program. So working on suggestions that Nancy has provided, we are looking to develop that strategic plan with kind of input from a committee of school community members, parents, coaches, the athletic director, and students, working collaboratively to kind of lay out that plan with timeframes and actionable steps. We also want to look at the role of the athletic director over the next year to two years, set standards on what we want to see happen in that role. And then finally, I think there has to be a separate work on the middle school side in terms of their development of their own task force and how they're going to look at their program.
I just jump, jump off where she left off, which is, this is the first review of athletics, I think, we've done in the district. And certainly, there are things that came through here that are not new issues, there are even legacy issues that I think date back a couple of athletic directors now. So I think some things are systemic, some things aren't current, some things are resource-oriented. So I think it is important that we map things out and realize that this hasn't all come over now. I do think the middle school issue adds a really big layer of confusion, because it is, as Nancy said, a legacy of being a junior, senior high school, when seventh, eighth grade students were part of the high school program. So really, we have a high school athletics program that through history, middle school students have participated in, but then as we've grown, it's really kind of thrown the whole thing into a big mess. That's not really clean, clear, or easy to explain. So a lot of work to be done to commend. Trish and Paul, they've really been processing a lot, it's a lot to take in. It can feel a little overwhelming, it's a lot of responsibility, but I think we'll handle it like we do most leagues and create a plan and get it to a level. I think the other thing worth mentioning, and then kick it to you guys for questions, is I think there's some philosophical questions we have to answer first, that really the school committee needs to play a role in, because I do think, you know, Nancy has her perspective on athletics, Trisha has hers, I have mine, Paul has his personal philosophy, all based on where we've worked, what we've done, and the type of athletes we were. But the philosophy that the athletics program carries forward has to be reflective of the communities of Manchester and Essex, and what you want from the program. So before we try to tackle whether we should have a cut or no-cut policy, we need to determine what the want of the community is for the program that we offer. Because I think, you know, you alluded to it, and certainly we've worked through enough of these issues, for every decision we make, let's say we go with a pro-cut policy, I know there's a contingent of people who feel the primary goal should be one of long sports. So we just need to wrestle with some of the big questions, so we have a framework for creating that policy. So can I respond to that a little bit? Just because we've been talking about social, emotional health, and you've been in those meetings, this one of the meetings. And I, I know it's a surprise, but it's not an epic, I was a great sporty- I was a great sporty person. And I raised four sporty persons. So, yeah. So, anyway, it's, you know, when we talk about this, the philosophy, I will tell you that my family has not experienced what you talk about in the first two slides, which I would love to see, but I don't think that's a living thing here. Even though I know that there's a lot of success, I don't think that it's pervasive philosophy. And I would love for us to be able to help hammer that out and then pass this off to this task force. But I do think we need to negotiate that social-emotional piece and the athletics piece. So we've had some good conversations, and we've talked to some folks in other communities about how they're addressing this, and I would like to make sure that that's a part of that conversation. So, and I love what you've shown us here. I mean, we've unearthed a lot of boils that need to be addressed. So thanks for that work. And thanks for opening yourselves up to being examined like this because it's not easy. But, so onward. You know, let's just go ahead and do it. And I'm from Cleveland, too, so, I mean, what, you know, I see the athletics just in there. Okay, so school committee comment?
All right, I'll start. It's a little daunting to hear you say that it's hard to remove that big rock, but a year to two years is a little bit frightening to me that that process might take that long. We've been talking about this a while, philosophy for the middle school. So we've really, as a school committee, for like two years, we've talked about it. We have to start there and what the whole overall philosophy is. But waiting one to two years as to see what the role of the athletic director might be is, seems like a very long time to me. A lot of kids are going to miss out or not miss out, or not get the social-emotional leadership, or the, you know, getting into a Division One school. I don't know what we're...
So that's what I'm, I'm just saying to your statement, we have to come up with what we're bringing.
What the framework is, what we want is, and we've just been talking about it for a while, so.
The resource priority is going to be the key to this as well, which is things that we could do quickly if there were resources there, are going to be very different than what we might have to do with other resources. So resources equals money. Let's be really clear about that.
I'm sorry, we have this fan right here. Can you just talk up a little bit?
Oh, yeah. That fan is the bane of our existence. Thank you for saying that. Not to get too much into the weeds, but I, you know, just having a little familiarity with Lincoln Sudbury and how they structure the role that you have, very similar to Anover, which is it was a full-time, principal-level administrator role that worked K-12 and had oversight of any kind of program. So that's resources.
Yep.
So to make a fast move to say, we want to add staff and get that done, given the conversation we're going to have at the end of the meeting, that's why I think Tricia's thinking two years in ahead before realistically we can build to a new model if we keep remedying things within the district.
My hope is that within that one to two years, we can make small, little adjustments.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, okay. And I don't want to be pushing back, but we've just been saying that for a while. So I just want to see those things, whatever they might be implemented, instead of saying, you know, next year, we're going to roll this big, you know, another study out or whatever. I just really want to see things start happening. And it has to start coming from us, too.
I'm wondering how the response was to your surveys, based on the night that I attended and the year I was in. Was the survey number two sent out?
I'm not sure of the percentage.
It was 212 responding. I want to say. It was... What? Oh, we sent out the entire community on a link. So 212, which is more than we generally receive on our surveys.
Did you guys get that, about 212 responses?
I had a question, a couple of questions. For the cut/no-cut issue, we're a small district, smaller than Lincoln Sudbury and smaller than Anover, so I find that thinking about the sports my kids have played, it's more an issue of fielding teams and how many teams are we going to have than teams being too big. So my fear would be that, you know, the social-emotional piece of kids who want to play sports should be able to play sports in the whole school district. My sense, because our school is so small, is that only a few teams would actually make cuts. Most teams would just be trying to field a team, and how would that fit?
You missed that? Oh, sure. Oh, you can. I mean, I think a good sort of sentiment would be, you know, give coaches the freedom of guidance from the athletic director and leadership to select teams based upon numbers that come out. I mean, if you get a surge of, you know, 50 kids coming out for field hockey, then, you know, it's just crazy to take 50 kids to field hockey. So to allow some flexibility with regards to that, I think, makes sense. But you're right, probably in most situations, you're not going to have to worry about it. And it's always nice in every season, they have a sport that's a no-cut sport anyway, like a cross-country or a indoor track where you can take everybody.
My experience has been that when there are too many kids, a team gets added. So like, it becomes varsity JV freshman or varsity JV if that, if a surge happens.
Yeah, and I think you want to try to plan for that because that's a cost for your team.
Yeah, and it does, you know.
And so, you know, all of a sudden, it just, and it's, because scheduling is done in advance. So all of a sudden, you know, you find out, oh, oops, I need a ninth-grade soccer team, but I don't have a schedule, so now you've got to scramble and get a schedule. It's not so easy. So hopefully, to be able to, so that you have those numbers, those projections, and to have a sense of what's coming down the pipe so it can...
Yeah. And then the other thing that you guys should know, and that I wanted you to know, is that we talk a lot about the athletic fee structure. This is my fifth year on the school committee, and it's always listed on our agenda, it's always an open session, and we, how many hours do you think we've talked about how to structure the athletic fees? Twenty cumulatively over five years? So it's on here. We're not, you know, we're not making it up and, you know, Pam shows us something and we sign it. Like, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, and talked about it from the revenue perspective, from how it's going to affect families' perspective, from how it's going to affect how many sports kids play, are they going to stop playing sports? Will they play more sports if we structure it this way? We've discussed it inside and outside and upside down for years.
You know, and it's, and there's so many models, there's so many options. You know, I think at Sudbury, when I did my latest sort of cost-for-student effort breakout, you know, there were a bunch of people who wanted to see the user fee based upon the cost of that sport.
We've discussed every model. We've discussed that one.
That's really hard, though.
And that's really hard. I'm not a fan of that.
Yeah.
You know, because then you've got these teams just by their very nature, and they're just naturally more expensive.
Yeah, they're more equipment, yeah.
But, yeah, it's, that is just a difficult task in front of you.
We've looked at every model out there. We have tried on, you know, theoretically, every model that's out there and how that would work in the small districts. Yeah, we've gone backwards all the cycles.
And you'll never please everybody.
Exactly. You won't please everybody, and nothing's going to fit for the company. But, you know, we'd like to keep talking.
That's the idea. Can I say, the one thing that I took away that I really liked that you said, and I've never thought about it, because I'm kind of, as a parent, I said, you know, we do need some more school spirit. We are small, and when you said that we have all the kids, they're all out there playing, who the heck's going to be cheering it on? So it's just so nice to hear that from you, that we do, that the kids are wanting to play and wanting to be out there. So that was a big takeaway for me. And just a question to you guys, what is the cost in the weight room? That just makes me a little nervous, that, like, my eighth grader is going to start going in there, she doesn't know what she's doing. So, I mean, just, you know.
Right. There should not be people in there unless there's supervision, and we do have supervision during the winter, spring, and summer with the bigger, faster, stronger program, so the weight room is open each afternoon. I do, I definitely agree with Nancy, though, that we do need better signage down there and better oversight of locking that area when there are not adults in the area.
Okay, but we do, there is, they should not be in there.
They should not be in there.
Okay.
That's why we have the bigger, faster, stronger program, so it does allow for oversight, and there's no cost to that program.
So can I just ask you quickly on that? The bigger, faster, stronger is the weight training. How many adults are there? How many kids are usually there? What's the breakdown? Thank God, that's all.
Right. Coach Hutton oversees the program. Often, there's other coaches around the area as well, and I obviously do not know the number participating this winter at all.
Twelve.
Oh, okay, so it's a small...
Because many kids are involved in other sports.
Right, okay. Jules, who's usually down there?
Yeah, yeah, and Jules.
Just a quick question, love to add, too. First, what is the state of our boosters? Do we currently have booster clubs or are you a booster club?
I'm not an expert on it, but my understanding is there is a booster club, and there's also a gridiron club. I don't know if there's other sort of friends of baseball or any of that, I was really not tuned in. My sense is, these are two clubs that try to do a lot of great things for the institution, and galvanizing those clubs under one umbrella would be even more powerful.
So boosters is everything else and gridiron's football?
But my understanding is gridiron tries to help out with other things.
Now, gridiron club has purchased equipment for all sports.
Equipment?
For the food, the field, the weight room, the field's been sprayed over, fixed that way, the signage out there, the water dispenser that's used by all sports teams, that's all been supplied by the gridiron club or used for any sport. The basketball machines that are being used by both boys and girls programs, so it's not specifically to football, but they have provided equipment that is universal to all sports teams.
Because the name is throwing us off.
Yeah. And then, what does boosters do, if you know?
Awards, they sell the food, they have games and so forth.
Then my other question was more for Tricia, because I'm so excited about the ruler program that we're doing in the school, and how does that intersect with athletics?
Actually, we were looking at each other, and she was talking about covenants and things like that. That's a big component of the ruler program in terms of, we've been working on developing our faculty charters, which is very much like a covenant that you talked about in the team and how we interact as faculty. We'll be working on that with students again next year, and I could see that playing into how you would develop a covenant for a team in terms of creating common language that's used amongst the kids and the faculty. And it's also, when we get into looking at like the mood beater and a meta moment, like knowing where you are and where your emotions are, and if you're in a game and you get a bad call, like, not having that outburst that might get you sidelined, but to, so it's kind of just all that mindset.
Yes, great.
So great, there are great...
You know, coaches are getting the ruler training.
They should be, yes. The coaches that are staff are definitely getting it right now because we're working with the staff currently, and then we'll go to the next one.
Go to the next one.
Thank you for your great presentation.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Not yet. Not yet.
I'm sorry.
Let's school committee, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nancy, I have a quick question. Great presentation. Did you have an opportunity to evaluate varsity JV at all, or sort of, you know?
I'm not sure what you're asking, like, the different level teams?
Right, just the whole leveling of each sport.
Yeah, not really. You know, I think...
I just wonder if you had any findings in that department?
No, not really. I didn't get a chance to, and I didn't hear too much about that.
Okay.
Can I ask one final question?
Sure.
Is there any sort of, did you do a look at gender, like, are men's or boys' teams treated any, you know, maybe I'm opening up a can of worms, but just, did you see anything that you think we ought to address?
Well, this is a funny, you'll get a kick out of this. So when I met with the students, when we met up here, it was all girls, probably about 24 girls and maybe, and there was one boy.
I think that was my son.
Good job.
He told me.
You know, I think they had it in the announcements, they had it on the websites. So I said, right off the bat, I said, ladies, where are the guys? Well, they're not going to come to this because they get everything they want, they're not going to complain, they're not going to care. And I just cracked up because then they launched off, talked about uniforms and this stuff. But, you know, my sense is that there's a good amount of offerings for both genders. It seems like there's sensitivity to gender equity. I didn't feel like that was an issue.
One more thing. Tricia, one of the findings was about training, available trainings for our A.D. and our assistant A.D. and the meshing of those two positions. And is that something that if you're going to act upon immediately?
We've started to act upon.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public, so if you could identify yourself, because we have a new school secretary, I mean, school committee secretary, so we just want to make sure everyone's identified, so if you could name a new name and new town, that'd be great. And Greg, you get to go first.
Thank you. Greg Lagden, Manchester. First of all, great job, great presentation, a lot of information. I know you just, you took a lot of different sources, a lot of different committee meetings, but if you could just kind of cut to the chase and share with us the top three things you found efficiencies within the athletic program that should be addressed, and, not so it's a background, but what are the top three kind of bullet points you would say, send to the superintendent that these need to be done in order to improve the program?
I think the role of the athletic director, the, you know, the combined position. You know, I think Pam, at one point, had said to me, do you think we should have a full-time athletic director? And I go, yeah, I do, I do. And I don't care if you're a school of 450 or you're a school of 2,000, the logistics are the same. It's a lot. And so to have a professional in that role that understands what it entails and can lead, you know, and is willing to learn and do all the necessary things to handle logistics. The thing about athletics is you can drown in the logistics. I mean, my, my goal was always to like, get a handle on the logistics so that I could be visionary, so that I could look ahead, so that I could do something more meaningful than just make sure the bus shows up on time. And those are the things that, you know, it rains outside, so there goes your day. You know, you're rescheduling. So to have someone who can, you know, to have a sentiment, to have a professional who's in there who is willing to not only take care of the logistics and the efficiency, but to be visionary and to look forward, and how can, how can we be cutting edge? Okay, so that would be my first and foremost thing. I think hiring is the most important thing to do. I would say if you do that right, everything else works. So, you know, putting a lot of emphasis into your coaches, educating them, making them the best they can be, providing them with every opportunity to learn, get them to be motivated, stretch them to reach their potential, I would say that's key. Hiring is not easy. Finding coaches, what do they get paid? And look at the time they put in. You know, I'm an advocate of the teacher-coach. Finding people in the building is your best solution. Some people will say, oh, I want that expert soccer person. They might not be trained as educators. They might not be addressing all those things that I showed you at the beginning of the presentation, which if you're an educator, should be the focus. So when you have teachers, I always would take a teacher with maybe a little lesser in the X's and O's, and you know what? I'm going to train you. I'm going to make you an expert. I'm going to get you to be a master of this curriculum because you're a good person, you're a teacher, you have all the fundamental skills. So that's, that's key to running a good athletic program. And then, next after that, I mean, budget is always tough, it's always going to be tough, you know, so I think you've got to kind of put that as it's always going to be there nagging you. Facilities, making sure your fields, everything's in good shape, keeping up on it, having a plan for turning over, you know, getting fields repaired, getting gyms replaced, floors redone, whatever have you, but keeping up with your facilities. You've got some nice facilities here, you've got to keep up with it because it's not always just going to take care of itself. So those would be my tops.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifier? Nancy, do you feel like we have a coaching deficit? You put coaching, hiring and coaches as number two.
I guess that sort of fell under coaching evaluation, you know, the coaching evaluation piece. So understanding how your coaches are performing and getting them to be the best they can be, and I just throw in there that I think hiring is the most important thing we do.
Anybody else?
Seriously, no, thank you.
Kim Gendron, Manchester. So, again, I agree, it was an excellent presentation. I know everybody put a lot of work into it. You had mentioned that our budget is 1%, the athletic budget is 1% of the total school district budget. Is that consistent with other schools?
Very consistent.
It is? So 1% seems to be kind of that number that it consumes.
I think it's just important to highlight it because, I mean, really, when you think about it, did you know that?
Right.
You know, and, you know, we always think about the costs of athletics. You know, and, you know, we always think about the costs of athletics and it is costly, but in the scheme of things, the bang for the buck is pretty darn good.
So I guess then my question, which maybe would go to the school or the school committee, I don't know who. You know, given that we have influxes of money from outside sources, from the gridiron, from Little League, from this, that sponsor coaches and, you know, whatnot, or pay for coaches, how does that get trans put into the budget? Like, how does that reflect in is then when we're looking at the athletic budget, is everything properly captured?
So I think, just a quick clarification, the athletics budget is about one, in the general fund, so dollars, taxpayer dollars earmarked for athletics runs at about one, one and a half. That's only about 50% of it. So actually, of the total budget, if you take in the user fee and cost of program, the cost of the program is closer to 3% of the budget because we're running out of 50% split. Now, to answer your second question, how much are we getting in and how is it being earmarked? I'm not certain, I don't know if you can offer any detail in terms of external dollars coming in and how it's being pushed out.
We, really, the main source of any money coming in is from the gridiron club. We do get a small amount of money from the boosters that pays for mainly the awards at the end of each season. And I'm not aware of any other sources.
That's something that for us to quantify.
And our teams aren't allowed to fundraise.
If I understood your question.
So we're in budget season now. Did I miss it? And it's, athletics is important, but academics are really important and we're, we're, we're having some difficult choices right now because we've had some unexpected increases in insurance. I mean, we employ a lot of people. So if you care about supporting the athletic budget, please pay attention to the bigger budget because we need support parents and we need help spread the word about why our budgets are what they are. You know, we're trying to juggle a lot of things and I know it's daunting to come into September and have to pay for clothes and school supplies and then athletic fees, but you know, the fees are only a portion of what the athletic program costs. And so there's, there's a lot of competing interests. So if you could please pay attention to the budget process, it helps us communicate to the towns why we're asking for what we're asking.
Can I just piggyback on Lauren Harrison from Manchester? You had said the programs can't fundraise. Is there like a reason why we still are not able to let teams fundraise for themselves?
It's a district policy that's been in place.
So can we reevaluate? Is there thoughts to reevaluating it?
So we, I'm old and have, and Greg, you can speak to some of this as well because you're kind of the same hair colors as what I have. We had in the past kids going door to door to raise money and that is a safety concern and the district did not want to have that sort of stuff happening. And then there were times where you would have some, one sport selling something that wasn't approved by the school district. So there were, there were things that were happening that were unbeknownst to the school unless their mom was on a committee and said, what the heck are you doing? So, you know, the school has to be careful about what we're letting kids do on their own. It's a safety concern and there was also some inequity there too. So I think you might want to address that maybe if, we just were uncomfortable with kids out there with a wagon full of stuff going to neighbors or strangers' houses. So Greg, I don't know if you know anything about the past with that, but we kind of put a halt to that.
We put that together over the past, we didn't have big groups.
Yeah. And I think inequity was the big driver. Like you could have a sport that for a series of years has a really active parent base and they're really helping with the lift to get better equipment or better uniforms for the kids and they can really bring in a lot of money, but you might have another sport that just doesn't have the same power behind it. So you start to develop teams that have our haves and have nots. I think that's where Nancy's getting at with the all board, the all sports boosters.
Could they do like a boost, like could all teams do like an all boosters if we had an all booster, you know, we're working towards that, to do fundraising under that guise?
We would love, I mean, I'd take anything you want to help us with.
But this has happened. My name is Christine Delissia from Manchester, but it has happened. And I think that, I think you all are ignoring the fact that the baseball team for the last two years did receive new uniforms from the Little League. And so by letting them sell the tickets.
In exchange.
In exchange for new uniforms, you have allowed that. So you either need to reevaluate the policy or let teams fundraise because you did accept the uniforms and they did sell tickets.
That's not, that's not my understanding of what happened with that. I'm happy to re-guess to that for.
The first baseball team has had new uniforms.
If we were misled in any ways, then we're going to need to address that with the people involved.
So where did the new uniforms come from?
We did not purchase new.
No, you didn't. Little League did. In exchange for selling cards from the varsity players.
Are those those cards, the coupon cards?
My understanding that that money was to go back to the Little League and in exchange the Little League gave the kids that sold the cards t-shirts. I investigated it last spring because I was concerned that the team was fundraising outside of the parameters of our district policy and given that it was going, the money was going to the Little League and they were assisting the Little League and they got a t-shirt for that, we didn't feel as though it was a violation of our policy.
But in return, you got uniforms.
I am not aware of that.
But we'll look into it.
They absolutely did.
I'll look into it because obviously if they did, we were misled.
Front page of the paper.
I think Nancy's idea about corporate sponsorship is a great one. I don't, I don't think we're going to get the half million.
I just think there needs to be a better policy in place because it is, there is pockets of fundraising.
Or maybe the policy needs to be enforced. I think there is a policy because I was here when we passed it.
Sean Daley, Manchester. I just think going on that, the opportunities here now to say we're going to take a year, I think you need to make a philosophy about fundraising and now rather than a year from now. You have the opportunity, there's people here that, businesses in town, in Essex, wherever, that'll be putting signs all over the field if you let them. The opportunity is there, whether or not you want to do it or not, that's your decision being on the school committee or the, being superintendent. But I believe you need to act now and have the ability. There's plenty of people in this room right here and plenty of people that aren't here that would be willing to help this school in a lot of different ways if you would kind of open your doors.
Which is also what we did, so the program book that you're referring to, that was done by parents, not part of the grid, well, the gridiron started it, but they funded, they basically took advertising dollars for that and did the program book for the football team. So that was outside of the school thing. The initiative was done, started for the basketball team too, which we also did. So we did that, but it was a parent-based program book that we put together. But sadly, the monies that were raised for that is going for the basketball, shooting, some basketball shooting machine, but then for basketballs. You know, as opposed to the above and beyond, like warm-up jersey or things that shouldn't, really aren't included in it. So that's where the question becomes, okay, as part of our user fee, we thought basketballs would kind of be included in that as opposed to, you know, I raised $22,000 or $2,200 from people to advertise in the program book expecting it not to go to basketballs.
And it may go with the no-cut philosophy that you have a number of kids playing basketball, which is a great problem to have, but you might not have enough equipment for 50 boys and 50 girls on your three teams. You might be done better.
I'm Paula Newton. I live in Magnolia. I'm a school choice parent and I have three student athletes and one particular student is in a current session right now where the number of participants is so large throughout every team that it's been hard to see kids leave the program because they're not hitting the floor and they're not participating even in practices. And when you talk about no-cut, I am on both sides of that angle because personally, I would be, I would be hurt for my child not to make the team. But on the flip side of that, it's also hard to see a student go out, get picked for a team, get a uniform for a team, but don't play or don't practice for that team. And when you talk about the user fees, I don't think any parent in here would be happy with paying $460 for the first high school sport fee and then see their kid come home and be depleted because they're not getting the emotional response that they should be by being a part of the team, by practicing, by evolving as that student athlete. So I think the picture, I think the problem is larger than maybe anybody's willing to admit. So I think that that is really, like you said, one of the top, one of the top three. I think that's also should be maybe in the top four.
It's very interesting because it really varies. It really varies by sport and by cohort because my son played basketball and dropped out because there were three teams with, and the freshman and JV had five or six or seven kids per team. And so they would have sometimes not enough boys to have five players playing at all times. And now there are too many people playing basketball. So it's very hard to, even, you know, when it's a, if it's cut or no-cut, it still is so variable from year to year.
Oh, true.
How many kids play a sport and basketball is such a special case because only five kids play that sport at a time and soccer, you know.
Right. You can have five on the court and then you can have five on the bench, but if you have 20 on the bench and you know particular kids are never going to hit that floor, that's so disingenuous to then your family to say, yeah, you can play.
That's what you're saying, flexible from your, you know.
Yeah, it's so right because.
But you can't rationalize taking $460 and not have your child practice.
No, it's terrible.
No, that's, you can't rationalize this. You can plan for it and you can have an evolving protocol for when you have those too many kids. I mean.
The numbers dictate.
Exactly. You cut. If you don't have a cut, it's not too difficult.
If we have four kids on a basketball team, we're having three teams. If we have 20 kids going out for each of those teams, then unfortunately, sorry, there's got to be eight kids that are cut in the team.
Absolutely.
That's what you did at the top front at the very beginning, you said, this is it. Sometimes, some year, yeah, we don't have enough kids, so you're all going to make the team. Other times, there's bigger grades coming through, sorry, there's going to be a bubble and.
I mean, basketball itself, I mean, in Manchester, Essex, my three kids have played travel from the start to the finish. Basketball's huge here, so it shouldn't come as any surprise that, wow, we have this big bubble of players coming up because these kids have gone through year after year after year until they age out of travel and then they want to come and they want to play school.
No, it is a surprise. My kid is a senior and the teams were too small two years ago.
But it shouldn't be a surprise because you saw them seventh and eighth grade and you saw the program rise. It really shouldn't be a surprise.
Your name is?
Yes, I'm going to say it. My name is Sarah Vallejo. I live in Manchester and I'm actually the JV girls lacrosse coach here at the school. It is actually a very simple task to look within the youth programs that feed into the high school program for retroactively for, you know, the year before, the year before, what kids are coming into the middle school, what kids are coming into the high school and where are the trends and where are the tendencies? You know, the varsity coach, myself and the head of the youth program and the girls program in lacrosse met with Paul this fall and it's, I mean, it took us, you know, 20 minutes to look at what seventh graders are coming into this year, what are the eighth graders, what are our carryover, what, you know, what girls have graduated, what girls are likely going to be moving up to varsity. So we had a full picture of the entire number and the needs for the girls lacrosse program in the fall. So it's not hard and I'm not saying like, you know, what we, what we were able to do with that and not do with that is, was because of a lot of moving parts with, you know, Nancy. But what I'm saying is that it's really easy to do if you actually just contact the head of the baseball program, contact the head of the, you know, the boys program. So you know actually of lacrosse, you actually end up youth sports, you end up youth basketball. You know exactly the numbers that are coming in. So we actually know what is coming in for not only what's coming in this year, we know what's coming in in the next two years. Like we looked out and so we said, oh, we have a big bubble this year, we have a big bubble next year. So there is a need for an additional, you know, team here looking out in a three-year policy. So it's actually, you know, it takes a very little amount of time and just a little bit of communication with the youth programs that are feeding into the high school, middle school and high school programs. So it's a, it's a, I know we all talk about the fluctuation of the numbers and we don't know and, but if you have a little foresight, you can actually plan ahead.
It's not a bad idea to have like a standing annual meeting with whatever heads of, whatever leagues and say, okay, what do you see this year? Great, what are we looking at? What do you see, you know? Clearly, that wouldn't be a bad idea. You'd have a line of sight right, you know, kind of backwards into what's going on. I want to wrap this up soon.
Okay.
So good. Quickly.
I hope it's as quick as I can. Does anyone else on the school committee feel that maybe we should talk or revisit the fundraising policy as to what Lauren said, as the, I mean, we are facing three to four really tough years beyond the budget, right? And this is the largest attendance we've had at any school committee meeting. So that shows that there is a very large interest in the athletic program. Does anyone else feel that maybe we should not push it out a couple of years, like this year, kind of really talk about the policy and see if there's other ways to create so that the kids or the teens can fundraise without getting inequity and blah, blah, blah?
Well, I would rather that the task force.
But we have to put the charge to it.
Right. But they're going to look at it and I think they're going to come forward with some recommendations.
But how far out is that?
I think we can ask them to address some things right away, so.
Okay, but is there, is the task force already, I took away from that, the task force isn't really established yet.
No, no, we needed to do this first. Actually, fundraising, it would be my preference that you guys take on that, like we can take on the cut policy right away and things like that, but being a school committee policy, I think.
I agree.
That might belong in your philosophical wheelhouse, but we can address some of the other things more quickly.
Okay, so let's kick that to policies ultimately.
Oh, my God.
That's first. I'm going to give us about eight or eight minutes or less. Any other, go ahead. What do you have, Rachel?
I just wanted to say that something else to consider with the cut policy, I'm kind of on both sides of it as well. I hear grumblings from parents and kids that, you know, if I didn't start playing basketball when I was five, I can't play JV or high school. And that makes me a little sad because back in the day, you could start a sport fresh as a ninth grader and kind of be on JV for a couple of years. So I just, I think we need to think about that a little bit. I think there's a lot of kids who are, see their friends doing club sports and they're very involved and they're, you know, and a lot of kids who are just thinking like, I can't even take up the sport. So just something to think about.
And that speaks to social issues.
Yeah, exactly.
And the middle school philosophy.
Right.
Okay, any other final comments?
Nancy being, Jake Foster in Essex, sorry. Nancy being very plugged into the athletic world, what's, what are some of the programming implications, if any, or what might be some future trends about around the head injuries? I know you mentioned it at least once, concussions and.
They're coming out with better helmets. There's this company, company called Zero One. They're, they're putting out some really good stuff. There's also all kinds of great gear, practice gear for tackling, so you don't have to actually tackle other students, but you can tackle, you know, particular types of dummies that are more, you know, lifelike robotic, whatever. So there's all kinds of things like that coming down the pike. Clearly, instruction is the key. So instructing kids on proper technique, like rugby-style tackling, you know, things like that, very, very important. So it really, I'd say that the foundation is making sure the coaches are as, just as qualified and trained and educated as possible, that they go to every clinic they can send them to, they know all the ways to teach, all the skills. And you don't have to do a lot of, you know, contact in your practices. I mean, coaches are backing off of that. So there's ways to train kids without actually doing a lot of the physical tackling and things like that.
One more, Sean Daley, Manchester. Just regarding the user fees, I think everybody here is not happy about it, but they understand that that's just life, that's the way it is. I would just suggest that there's more transparency with these fees and more communication on how much we're collecting and other avenues that. I know from a youth sports perspective, we pay a lot of money to use the facilities, whether it's the field or the basketball courts here. Is that going into a separate account, which in my opinion should be just a pure athletic, athletic user fee should be, go into a pure athletic account that is only used for athletic purposes only?
Just statutorily by law, user fees must go specifically to the program. They do. When we've done our financial reviews on athletics and user fee reviews, which are available on the website, we do make all that information very transparent. It is available up on the school committee website and basically funds about 45% of the program. percent of the program. So the portion, I think Pam was talking about, the one and a half percent is what is funded through the general fund budget, which is taxpayer dollars. When you add in the user fees, it, you know, the other forty-five percent of the program is covered for a total of about six hundred thousand dollar program all in all, excluding donations, which don't, which really, they pay bills for their own things, they fundraise and pay those bills, those dollars don't really come to us by and large. That's where that money goes. So that, we do try to make that information available. We do a very detailed review that we put up on the web and present every couple of years and hopefully that's available, but if you can't find it, we'll make sure that the link goes back out.
Hi, Paul Street, Manchester.
But that's only, Paul Street from Manchester, but that's only for the user fee money, correct?
The, I'm not sure.
The transparency, what you're saying, is that just what we're paying, user fees? Is that the whole sports budget?
No, we, we do a full budgetary review on the athletic program, the total cost of the program, how the cost of the program is changing over time, what portion is funded by taxpayer dollars, what portion is funded by user fees, how that compares to other communities and the percentage breakdown, what our user fee looks like compared to other communities, what types of structures they have in our community compared to others. It's pretty detailed, but if there is information that's not in there that you feel or other people feel like they need us to give information about, by all means, we'd be happy to do that.
Is it broken down like, you know, like basketball program, gyms, this, that? You know, the total basketball budget or football or baseball?
Yeah, so another thing we do is go into a detailed cost by sport analysis, which I think, I don't think too many schools do because it's pretty time consuming, but we do have a process for doing that every couple of years. It's extremely detailed. It shows all the direct costs for every program. It also shows that the program-wide costs that need to be allocated, it's on a total basis, it's net of fees because we show how much we collect in gate receipts and how much those go to each sport. And then we also show how that compares on a per student basis, so you can look at the per student cost. So again, we try to be very detailed and very transparent, but if there are people feeling like there's more information, that's one of the things I try to pride myself on doing, so just let us know how we can help and we'll try to get that information available to people.
I just know the parents' meeting that came up a lot about, can we see the budget for each sport? Can we see where this money is going? I couldn't care less if I'm paying for basketball and maybe I might use a piece, four hundred bucks, and only two hundred is going to basketball, that covers it, and two hundred go to football. I don't care that that's, as long as it's staying in sports program, you know, and that's fine.
Yes, user fees a hundred percent are staying in by law and by actual policy.
It's on the website and if you can't find it, email one of us and we can help you direct them to it, but we.
And maybe we need to just share that information at the beginning of the season so people who may not be familiar with that can get that. And so we need to communicate that better. That's something we can work on.
But it could be on, talking about the website, it could be on the athletic homepage. There's a budget right there if you want to go search it.
Yeah, we can look into better ways to get the information out.
I will post that on the athletics page, let's say tomorrow or noon time.
That'll be great because it did come up in the meeting a lot, that no one knew where it was, we couldn't find it and.
Yeah, because I just pull it up, it's kind of in the archive.
It is very detailed and it does break out. I think, I think a lot of the discussion when the focus was this year was more of, okay, so my son's playing golf, you know? There's no uniform, there's no, well, there's uniforms, that's a bad example, but it's, there's, it's not a overly cost-intensive sport relative to football. So I think therefore, sometimes a question comes up, you know, we're paying a flat fee across the board, but in reality, one sport may be really heavily supplementing another. And moving forward, I'm sure you've discussed this as far as, do we continue that way? Do we do it on a per-court basis? I think sometimes people would like you to see more of the nuts and bolts and, and I think the idea of having a pre-sports meeting before the even sports starts would be helpful to say, okay, now knowing for my sport, I know I don't get socks, I don't get a mouthguard, I don't get this. Football team does, but you know, like whatever it might be, to say, okay, what are my extra sports or things that I need to then fund in addition to my athletic fee, in addition, you know, what else comes with it? What's included, what's not?
And we have talked about, every time we talk about athletic fees and changing them, we have talked about having it be depending on how much your sport costs to run and it's, you know, it's just a really hard lever to pull.
It's also.
Community-wise.
It's a public school and we want to make sure that it doesn't become.
What sports can you afford to play and what sports can you not afford to play?
Okay, we're going to try to wrap this.
There are a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good. My question was answered.
Okay, so if you have other questions, you're the last one.
Jenny, Manchester. I'm, my understanding is that the task force has not been created yet.
Yeah, this was the start of this.
I'm just wondering what the strategy and timeline for creating that task force looks like.
We will be putting out a call for people interested in being involved. I'll have them write letters explaining why they want to be involved because given the number of people here, I'm certain there's a number of parents that are going to want to be involved and we're going to need to have a process to do that equitably and have the people who are truly committed to the meeting times and dates to be there. So I'll be laying that all out in the next, in the next few days.
Can you tell me who has the most information about the field status? Is that you? I mean, I guess I'm trying, I'm on the planning board and there's a lot of money within the CPC for like funding and research and like, there's like state money to be like matched and I just, I've tried to reach out, but everyone seems to know a little bit, but I don't know what person in Manchester School District like has done any research at all on what fields in Essex or Manchester can be expanded to high schools, high school, our basket, our baseball fields. They won't pay for turf, but they'll pay for everything else but the turf. I mean, there's a lot of money that I think we can tap into. I mean, I've tried to put my dealers out, but I've just not gotten a lot of response, so.
I would say Board of Select.
No, 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 it's not the Board of Select. I need to know in this room who is it, because they're telling me to go find it.
So you want to help us invest in field expansion, developing town properties? But that's got to go to the Board of Select in each town.
So there has, like, so I've talked to football people and baseball people and they say, oh, this field can't be expanded into a, but there must be someone here that has looked into any field, like.
So Greg was on the field. Were you on the Fields Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you want to talk after this meeting, the two of you?
So I'm just keep trying to find who is, because it's not you.
Several years ago.
So the school is going to vote to spend some money on a field or would be no one in this room? I'm just trying to figure.
No, we would vote. Can you connect, because honestly, you were probably in this room, know more about the fields in both towns than anybody else in this room, because you were on the Fields Committee.
Sure.
So if you can connect the friend.
So is no one in this board on the Fields Committee?
We can, we only control the property that the school leases and that's the existing football field, Memorial School Site and Essex School Site. So to develop fields within the town, you have to go through the Boards of Select.
So no one here has looked into any additional space to lease or what was good about it or what wasn't good about the field?
So.
So if you needed another field for a freshman team for baseball, has no one, no one here has looked to see?
Field of Dreams, is that what it's called, the one in Essex?
Yes.
So no one's done any research on that, is that what you're trying to get?
People have done research on that and that was a Fields Committee, which was a separate committee in, it was a joint committee between the two towns, and that committee has more information about that than anybody at this table. That's not been our priority in terms of spending, so I, I think really, if you could connect with Greg, he'll give you some background on that and maybe, you know, you can come back to us with some proposed, but I, I think that that's not something we could get into.
That's a good place to start, Christina, with him, if you haven't before.
So, you have a Fields Committee background?
Sorry, Greg, I'm bothering hearing you. Okay, so we're going to conclude this discussion and we're going to move on to our next agenda item. We're going to give you guys a couple of minutes if you're going to leave so that we can.
But stay because.
But you're staying because we're going.
The Program of Studies, it's interesting.
I just got my water.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you bring it up for the class?
Is there an open question portion of this at the end?
Yeah, we had open comment at the beginning of the meeting and we'll have it at the end. Okay. Okay, Patricia, we were talking about the high school Program of Studies and some changes that you're going to be making.
Yeah, so I'm actually, this is one of my favorite presentations to do every year because I think that it really underscores the hard work that the teaching staff are doing on a daily basis.
Let me get some water. Yeah. Okay.
So I really think it does underscore the work that the teachers do on a daily basis and their real desire to adjust their curriculum according to student needs and to provide new and engaging ways to bring kids into the classroom and to modernize curriculum in terms of what kids are going to need upon graduation from our high school going into the world ahead of them. So I did kind of give you a brief description of the changes in the, in the Program of Studies. One, I'll start with the art department. They deserve a tremendous shout-out. Their growth of their program over the last three to four years has been amazing. They are now offering four AP art programs beginning next year. They've moved to a studio lab-style course where next year, after you get through the foundations, you go into art studio where you can really focus on things that, the type of art, the medium, that you're most interested in, be it sculpture or be it printmaking or be it painting or drawing and really develop those ideas. The numbers of students in the art programs has increased immensely and the number of students we have winning in different competitions and having their art displayed publicly has also increased tremendously and it's really amazing. And I, hopefully you saw some of the art over the fall downstairs. I thought the portraits of people who were important in your life that the kids did, they, yeah, they really were amazing, so.
Amazing.
Amazing. So I, I think the art program is just growing leaps and bounds and Tamara Burns and Carolina.
Oh, is this a town thing or is that just?
Yeah, Black House. Generator.
Generator.
Yeah, and I sent a note earlier to our art facilities and AT, sorry, and tech person, so.
This is very young.
This looks more generator than before.
I will. So in the English department, you know that we implemented the grade twelve electives last year and it continued this year. Teachers are tweaking some of the titles and content that they're using in those programs. The kids seem very engaged by them and are excited. The second semester, we were in need of another elective. We were short an elective in terms of being able to have somewhere for all kids to be, so we added a new course for second semester that will continue next year and that's going to be creative writing. Within that class, there will be the development of a literary magazine by the students in the course, again, allowing kids to expand their self-expression through poetry and writing and actually engaging kids in writing that maybe aren't able to enter the journalism class but can have work published through a literary magazine.
And this, any of these things that we're talking about are ads and are possibly?
So the art is not an ad, that's just some things we have redistributed.
Okay.
So we've redistributed art.
But there's more APs, correct?
Yes.
And there were, how many before?
We had one and then last year we moved to two and now we're up to four.
Okay.
Yeah, but they run in the same section, well, two and two, so we're able to offer more for kids by having the teachers really differentiate within their classrooms. In terms of the English department, the electives are the same. The creative writing is an ad and we're hoping if we're able to secure a humanities position for next year to be split between English and social studies, we'll be able to continue that in an effort to offer the appropriate number of electives to schedule students fully as our numbers grow with the high school. And in mathematics, we do have the addition of a proposed elective, which would be life skills in the 21st century and that would be focusing on real-life financial skills for students aimed mainly at juniors and seniors. So what does it mean to buy a car, rent a house, balance your checkbook, if you bet or held me to do that these days? You know, what does amortization on a mortgage look like? So again, it's real-life 21st century skills. We find that kids graduate not having that knowledge and that's not the way to be sending them off to their life. We should be sending them off prepared for those real-life encounters. And the science department, one thing we found to share was there was a lot of confusion since we are realigned to have biology, chemistry, and then the students, a lot of students say, well, I go right to physics. Not all students should be going right to physics in junior year. Students who have completed Algebra II should be going into physics either junior year or senior year. Alternatively, students which could be enrolling in a number of the electives offered in the science department, AP Environmental Science, Green Scholars, Sustainability, and we'd like to offer a new elective course next year and that's Introduction to Biotechnology, which is a very exciting add to the program and again, looking more forward to the skills that kids will need upon graduation.
Is that, you know, we've, we've talked about that program over in Gloucester. Is this labs, I mean, is this skill-based also or is it just?
This is skill-based also and actually speaking about the program over in Gloucester, we're inviting them in to do a program in the guidance office, very similar to we would, like a college coming in to visit. Because we actually do have students who have either graduated from here or maybe have not been successful at the high school who are now enrolled in that program and are finding tremendous success.
Really? Oh, I'm so glad.
Yeah, so it's exciting and I think now that we see that success, we want to make sure that students realize that is a post-secondary option for them or an alternative option.
Right, so can we hear more about that when you do your like roundup?
Yeah.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, definitely.
Good.
Definitely, definitely. And then try to go fast. Also, in the science development department, last year, we were fortunate to have the addition of a STEM teacher due to kind of the reallocation of resources. And during this year, that teacher's been looking at developing STEM pathways and kind of reorganizing the courses. We had kind of a mishmash of tech courses that were housed in the math department and didn't always seem to make a lot of sense. And now they're housed as really their own department, the STEM department falling under science and creating pathways in computer science, electronics and mechanics. So students could follow a pathway all the way through to achieve, you know, real proficiency in computer science, ending in AP computer science or in electronics or in mechanical design. Or they may just choose to take, not actually engage in a pathway for all four years, but they may take the courses as part of an elective. We would like to see students start in interactive device design, which is a new course that's been developed to take place of some outdated courses. That's really about design thinking and using science and art in that thinking and how you begin the design process and kind of move through to the end. And in terms of computer science, we had kind of a mishmash of, we have Intro to Computer Science, CP Honors and then AP Computer Science. It was very underdeveloped due to lack of staffing, but now we have a full kind of, starting with Scratch, which is more of a very introductory way of programming. It's much more prescriptive and easy for kids to get the idea of coding, then moving on into Introduction to Computer Science, which would include an introduction to Java and then full-on into AP Computer Science for senior year.
I had to look up Scratch.
What?
Is this a typo?
No, Scratch, yeah.
Find out what it was.
Some schools actually teach it in the middle school or it's used in the high school as an introductory course, but it's really an introduction to the thinking of programming and it has like the numbers, numbers and symbols there that you kind of plug in. It's almost like a drop and drag as opposed to actually scripting out full, I'm going to get the wrong term, but when you have to put all the slashes and the dots.
So where do they pick?
Syntax.
So if you're a freshman, where do you pick this up? You have to take biology, right?
So this would be part of the elective program?
Yeah.
Yep, so this would be, these would be mainly, except for AP Computer Science, these, many of these would be. um these, many of these would be elective courses that could fit on the other side of gym during freshman sophomore year.
Okay.
Um and social studies is kind of rearranging some of their electives. Um they were teaching US government and democracy for freshmen and sophomores and then AP US Gov. for juniors and seniors. Um they are looking to um morph the US Gov. and democracy for freshmen and sophomores into um democracy in the digital age and really focusing on um what does it mean to be a citizen in a digital um society? How do you read and interpret news? Um how do you make choices about appropriate sources and how do you become a fully informed citizen in a democracy? What?
No tweeting your thoughts.
No tweeting your thoughts, right. And I would love to teach that class. This is right up my head.
I would love to take it.
Yeah. Um and then we have um another course aimed more at juniors and seniors, which is conspiracy theories and it's kind of an alternate look at American history through, there's all sorts of conspiracy theories that are going on. But again, the focus is on looking at documents and information and making decisions about those and why those theories may emerge or why people might believe those theories or should not believe those theories. But it's about critical thinking, but using engaging topics such as, you know, the JFK assassination.
So I'm thinking about those next generation standards that Julie talked about.
Mm-hmm.
When we met with her and I'm wondering how much of this is kind of um speaking to those standards and what, you know, the writing and the information literacy and literacy across all disciplines?
Mm-hmm.
Um if you want to speak a little bit to that, you know, curriculum in the high school.
Yeah, sure. Um I think that's something, a conversation we've already engaged in and something that's been part of our practice in terms of writing across, across the curriculum. Um one thing we were talking about today at our department chair meeting that we think we need to implement and do better is um implementing a protocol for review of student work across the disciplines, so having teachers in different departments reading students' work in other areas and providing input. And there's protocols to do that either within a department or across departments. Um and as we were talking about that today, I think that's something we'll be looking to do going forward. Writing should not be the um sole property of the English department. Writing is certainly owned by all members of the um school community. I think in science, um the skill of technical writing is extremely important. Um the science department is looking at developing a standardized um lab protocol to prepare students for what they would see at um at the collegiate level. So beginning in grade eight and moving forward, developing that systematic um format of lab writing and also how technical writing should look in developmentally eight through twelve in preparation for, again, what what college writing needs to be.
It has started already.
It has started already, yeah, definitely it's started, yes, yes. Chris Humili, as the department chair for science, has done an outstanding job at, at leading.
Yeah.
The teachers in that, in that work.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's exciting.
So do you need a motion for us to approve this?
Um yes, for the handbook itself. Um there is not any other changes, we're completely um.
Editorial.
Technical, like, I forgot comma or something like that.
Great. So can I have a motion to approve the program of studies dated January third, so that's Erdman and then Wolf?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for both coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Scheduling um is going to begin for students. Um teachers will start talking about the program studies within the next two weeks up until the beginning of February and then they'll be getting their recommendations. And I know um Ken's not here, but last year there was concern that we started the override process too late for the eighth graders coming into ninth grade and we did, we got caught up. That was mentioned in early meeting. Um that will begin right after April vacation this year as opposed to waiting until June, so we don't have that same problem.
Trish, this looks great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I love seeing changes every, like, really great changes every year.
Yeah, it's fun.
But it also is like you're looking at stopping, you're, you're evaluating what's good and letting stuff improve, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
So Transformer Fire is down if anybody's.
Oh, really?
I don't know, Mark's just going, I hope they put the fire truck back, so. Great. Okay, so we have um Gail Hunter who's working with us and um is going to become our new school secretary. And do we need to have a motion to appoint her?
Yes.
So can I have a motion, motion to appoint um Gail Hunter as our school committee secretary?
Okay.
So that was Weld and then Fitzgibbon? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Welcome, Gail.
Welcome, Gail. Didn't know what you were getting into. All right.
Stuck number, advantageous.
All right. All right, budget, Avi and Ken.
Not a large report, unfortunately we lost a couple of days last week, we had some critical meetings planned, so um and is it coming back on?
Is what coming back on?
The lights are coming back on. I have a little bit of a spreadsheet, I have a spreadsheet with a little bit of information to go over with you, but I have no way to show it to you at the moment.
Okay.
So I can talk you through a couple of things.
Sure.
Um they're big picture, so I think we don't really know much more than we knew prior to the break in terms of um big picture numbers. We have made a small adjustment to the healthcare number, to the assumption. Um looking at the last couple of months of trends, there's an anticipation that we might be able to bring the overall cost down a point or two. So if you recall, we were looking at um overall a nine hundred thousand dollar, we'll take you through a few steps. We were looking overall at nine hundred thousand dollar deficit going into next year. We took an initial reduction through attrition based on known and projected retirements for three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And I can get this to you.
Yes.
I just thought we would have them, which left us with a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar um gap to close between now and February.
Yeah.
So the first adjustment we made was we credited seventy-five thousand dollars toward that in the assumption revision for healthcare. And if you had the sheet in front of you, you'd see it's in italics because it's an estimate at this point, we're not really sure if we can lock it in. And I think that's how we feel about this whole sheet, really. Um we're also looking at um a retiring health offset, so a use of some OPEB dollars to offset the cost of retiree health with the uh increased insurance rates and we're crediting fifty thousand dollars toward the deficit from that. And then something that we've talked about a little bit, um I think as a whole group, but I'm not really, I can't really recall at this point, is looking at um reducing the out of district projection in the budget for next year and working to create an earmark within our reserves to cover any that may come to fruition. Can we take you through that really quickly? Every year, Allison Collins puts together a projection based on cases she has in front of her that she feels may land in an out of district placement and um come with the cost of the district, which was in transportation. She always budgets extremely conservatively, which means high estimate.
Mm-hmm.
In normal years, we would have enough money in the budget to build in two hundred thousand dollars of possible costs out next year without having to reduce other programs to do that. Because the cost of healthcare came in so high, in order to find room to carry that projection in the budget, we would have to make real cuts to program or personnel to cover that projection. Um my recommendation is that for next year, we establish an earmark within our reserves, which are quite healthy, of two hundred thousand dollars in case any of her projections come to be and then do it knowingly and putting on writing to ourselves that in the FY twenty budget, we then take the actual cut. So we may not be able, we may not be able to avoid cutting program or staff, but it may allow us to prematurely cut something that we can't, we don't know for certain will come to be. It's kind, think about it as your emergency fund for, if you, you know, if you, you're out of work, you put aside a certain amount of money and you leave it there hoping that you're never going to touch it, but it's there to get you through um a pinch. So we would earmark two hundred thousand dollars next year to get us through and then take the cuts in the FY twenty budget.
So it's like taking, taking it out of our reserves and earmarking it, putting it in a lockbox, right? And um then, but so it's not coming out of operational budget this year. And I guess my question is, do we need to make that, it's still counted as a reserve so when we go to borrow, we still have the?
That's why I leave it as an earmark within the reserves, because Avi had explained that if you leave it intact in, in the unassigned money, then it counts more favorably.
Oh, really?
And you're saying that there's a count, there's a chance we won't spend it.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what we had done in the past was physically move money into the budget from reserves, but then that creates a false sense that there's money there. This would actually remind us that we'd have to go to the reserves to pay the bill.
Yeah.
And then tag a cut for the following year.
So it needs to be?
That's what I want to talk about.
Yeah.
The cut in the following year.
So if we had to use the money, then we would have to.
You'd have to use it by fiscal year twenty.
No.
No.
When we build this FY twenty budget, we either have to reduce staff or program.
To pay for that two hundred grand.
To pay for, it may be fifty thousand dollars in tuition, not two hundred thousand.
Okay. Whatever we used of that earmark.
Right. What it avoids doing is creating, this year we'd have to make two hundred thousand dollars in real cuts for not a real expense. If it becomes a real expense, then we have to make a real cut.
Got it.
But my concern is that we're going to cut two hundred thousand dollars worth of staff, worth of staffing program because we might need to pay something. Um when we have very healthy reserves that could get us through a one-year hold, it's not a long-term fix, the cut will have to be made, but it won't create the need this year to reduce staff or program, give us another year to try and get through the bubble.
What, just, I just think you should be clear, like particularly when we're talking about it with FinCom, to say, not to say that a cut will have to be made in, for fiscal twenty, twenty, but that it might.
Might.
If the money gets spent.
If we have to access the fund.
And also, is there another opportunity for us not to have to cut if, for example, we had a great healthcare year?
Yes.
Okay. So like those kinds of things.
But we don't know healthcare until after the February.
And I think.
Not this year.
Yeah.
Talking about the.
Before the two-year track, we'll go through the rest of these, but the big umbrella to this is these are things we have to do now, similar to the prep conversation we had for our building committee meeting. Healthcare is the root cause of this, it has to be part of the long, has to be the long-term solution, but we don't have a timeline that's going to get us the long-term solution, so we have to have a short-term option to get us through next year. And these are just not great short-term options to get us through next year.
Can I just ask one final question about this? Um how do we, how is that articulated um so that it's visible? So if it's, it's, it's in our heads that we're earmarking two hundred, but how is it visible in the budget so that there's a, there's some certainty among stakeholders that we have that, or does it matter?
I don't think it matters because if we're presented with a bill, we're going to have to pay it.
Right.
If we can't dig it out of operational, we're going to have to go to reserves to get the cash.
Okay.
Can I go back to the, the budget, Allison's budgeted amount, two hundred grand? What's been her run rate on, on hitting that number? How close has she come in the past, let's say, five years, Avi? I mean, has she?
Well, our heads, not a district, has been even at twenty. So something comes out and something goes on.
So go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think she's very good at doing that work. I think the issue is that to project at day X, something that's going to be happening at day X plus a hundred and eighty to three hundred and sixty days is really, really unpredictable, even if nothing else, just for people who might move into the district, as we've talked about in our budget hearings, that's often one of the biggest unknowns because we tend to have a sense of who's in the district and what their needs are. So um again, I think uh in a normal situation, if the budget will hold, that's fine. Uh that's where we've been in the past. Uh we haven't had any major surprises and I think having in district programs, as we've talked about, has been a massive success for the district and for the kids who get to stay here. So I'd say the track record has been great.
And not getting close to two hundred.
That was the money you went to at the end of the year last year to help close the gap?
Oh, right.
To reduce that estimate again.
Okay.
I think it's a good creative way.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it's creative, too.
And with all honesty, it could be the year where the number, the protection is the reality.
Right. And then we're, we're up against it in the following year.
You mentioned that there was some good healthcare news, but then what? That looks like.
We had a couple of good months, which is.
So you're hoping.
Which is projecting that maybe the sixteen percent comes down a point or two. So we credited seventy-five thousand dollars.
Did the health insurance person tell you that that, I mean, are you, are you a conservative?
Yeah, we're getting monthly data in and um you basically what, one of the biggest things that we're seeing is, not surprisingly, with the influx of the massive increase that we paid last year, we've thrown kind of painfully a lot more money into our portfolio that is helping to manage claims. Claims are still high, but they're not continuing to accelerate and so as a result, that new, that twenty-eight percent that we paid last year is helping to stabilize things. And so uh we really only get, you know, every month or so, one more month of data and we're just getting into data that is as of now, this week, we're getting information that's as of um the beginning of the school year because until that, we've only had summer data, which is a little uh noisy because you don't have all the new hires on board and that sort of thing. So really, within the next, um within the next week, we should have much better information and then a month from now, really right around when budget finalizes, we'll have yet another bite at the apple, so.
Okay.
And none of that will be final, as you know from prior years, we still don't finalize the number until really after the budgets tend to go to town meetings. Um so we always have some unknowns, but so far incrementally, the news has been better than what we put in the budget.
Great. Okay, you have more?
Yeah, so these start to get into impact on services, fees and revenue. Um so we are looking at these following options and we think um that will bring us within spitting distance of closing the gap if they all come to be. So from the initial things we talked about, um creating a, an offset for the out of district production, looking at the retiree health offset and the healthcare adjustment, got us to within two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of our goal.
Really?
Yes. So now we're looking at things like, is there a benefit to moving to a full-day kindergarten on Wednesday and eliminating a bus run, which we estimated eight, eight thousand dollars?
How much?
Eight.
Eight.
At least eighty-eight thousand.
Do it.
Holy Christ, absolutely.
That's one of the things I really do need to bet with the principals to make sure I'm not treading on practice culture, that it's doable and all of those things, but that seems like it would be, on its face, an increase in service and a decrease in cost, it seems to make sense to me, but I also, I'm asking the question, what am I missing in this because it's too simple?
Well, for working parents, that Wednesday was really hard to find childcare.
So we may be, we'll be having a discussion about that on Thursday. We're going to eliminate the late bus for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um we've asked Salter to look at reducing uh the morning and afternoon bus run by consolidating runs. Um everything from going down to one run in either town or both towns or going down to one massive run for all schools, all kids, all the time.
So you're just going to get, they're going to get the?
Everybody can come in at eight fifteen.
Scenarios.
So just, yeah, can we consolidate in any way, shape or form? And yes, some of these options won't be popular because you don't want your kindergarten kids on the bus with the middle school and the high school.
Right.
But, you know, what is the cost savings? If they can easily eliminate or eliminate a run that doesn't put kids on the bus for forty-five plus minutes for each of the levels, we think that would save us about fifty thousand dollars.
What about this, you know, I know that my ears popped when she said, you know, buying those small buses, you know, or whatever, their vans or whatever, did you, have you guys thought?
It's on a list for um things to look at.
Okay.
For both special education um and like in district programming and for that, I, I think there's a lot of study to be done because you're going to take on the, you know, there's taking on the cost of the, and maintenance of the machine, of the vehicles.
Yeah.
Having to find people to drive them reliably, which if is, it's a problem for the professionals that do it. I would worry about the daily management of that and who is going to daily manage the runs, the people.
And I totally get all of the logistics.
What is the whole, what is the whole real cost of it?
It was an interesting idea to explore.
I agree. I agree.
Pam, if you are um with regard to consolidating bus runs and Salter, if you are presenting Salter with, you know, fewer revenue opportunities, does that incentivize them to maybe put[1764.76] Salter with, you know, fewer revenue opportunities, does that incentivize them to maybe put this up a little bit? Or no, they don't care?
Or does it incentivize them to raise their prices?
Prices, they're not going to be raised. We have a bid, so that won't change. But we do have in our contract the right to get as much service as we think we need, and we have the right...
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. And we have the right to access the information. It's our information. So, and they've been very supportive about that. So we don't have any type of adversarial relationship. Really, what we're trying to do is get the facts. And we've had a good, good partnership. When we've asked these types of questions years ago, they both, they provide the facts.
That's the one Caroline's looking on with me. It's, I've got it highlighted. That's a big maybe. And we just don't really know what they're going to come back with. And then it may be a quality decision about how long do we really want kids on the bus if they can't do it. So...
Maybe that entrepreneurial high school class could come up with like a VAM service between Manchester and Essex.
I tell you, we need to, we need to parent Uber, because there's always people, I mean, there's always people texting and coming to...
Sorry.
That's totally off the, the weeds.
We booked solar savings in there for $10,000, knowing that the panels are coming in. We were scraping bottom here.
Hmm?
It's 11.
Yeah, I think we said 11:15. I went with round 10. High school student activity fee as a proposition. We bounced it off Patricia. She's mulling it over. Do we look at offsetting the cost of stipends for club advisors by charging just a flat $100 per student per year activity fee? If every student paid, we'd get about $40,000 to $5,000, knowing that you probably are only going to get 70% tops for chasing. We put it down for $30,000 as a possibility. Again, these are all things that we are trying to, to put, put on the list and see if they're going to hold water. We think we're just going to pick up a very small $5,000 gain. We've got secretarial retirements coming. We're anticipating replacing them with newer people at the lower end of the sliding scale. Will probably bring us a tiny bit of savings. And then Avi and I did a quick back of the envelope today on overtime, cost of overtime. So we have overtime for guidance. This would be aside from the required services for special education for the summer, but sometimes we have some admin or the department head or team chair, extra time in the summer. We've got PD time. Then we've got custodial overtime, painters, things of that nature. So we slashed that budget in half and took a $60,000 savings there.
And just to clarify, that's extra time, not time and a half overtime in a strict hourly sense. It's time, you know, extra year of time.
Wait, how much did you pick up there?
Sixteen.
So is this up and above the $225,000?
These aren't best practices necessarily. This means some painting won't get done. Some maintenance may not get done. The fields may grow a little longer, because they're getting cut every fourth week instead of every two weeks. So these don't come without, you know...
Yeah.
Without losses.
So you're feeling overall...
And then the high, we also booked another hiring cap this year. Avi was great. He took a look and said, you know, no matter what, even if we're taking through attrition, by the end of the summer, there'll be eight to 10 people we have to replace anyway. If we cap the hiring, we can probably save $30,000. So that put us to within $7,000 if everything came to be.
Yeah.
We have some other more substantial things to look at for program and staff. That we'll go through with AC, because they all have building-based implications. And hopefully bring those to you next time.
Thank you. I know that that was a really heavy lift.
It's okay. It actually feels good, because it feels much more doable than just the number banging around in my head. So we know, and Avi's great at holding feet to the fire on this, these all sound really good right now. That number looks great on the page, but they're only, they're only valuable if they actually can be executed. So that's kind of the next step in the process, which is, which are these are actually going to come to be and give us real, you know, real savings. So that's where we're at today.
Okay. I think some committee reports should be fairly quick, because we haven't really met since our last meeting. Facilities is working on the PSR meeting tomorrow night, moving from hopefully seven schemes to four to five. So if you want to be there tomorrow, we're going to talk about some design decisions and citing on the building.
On that, we have conflicting meetings that need coverage tomorrow. So we have a building committee, committee meeting happening at the same time as the FinCom meeting, which some of us should have...
I think it's more important that you go to the FinCom meeting.
Yeah, and...
I can go to building, for what it's worth.
Caroline and I, we need to go to building. But, but FinCom, I don't think Maury's there tomorrow night.
No, I don't think she's not. I don't think Sarah is going to be there. I think John Cross is going to be chairing it. And then Andy will be at building committee. He won't be at FinCom either.
Yeah. So I don't know if you want to wait until Andy gets, or until Maury gets back from vacation to, I mean...
You also, I mean, I don't know if it's a good time to interject. There's also some question as to whether or not we can come to a FinCom meeting on January the 17th.
Yeah, they've asked us to do that. Today's the 19th.
Yeah. We said we would go back, and I'm more than happy to go back. I just don't think we're in any...
I don't think we're ready.
We've got nothing to talk about, because we're still trying to figure out where we're at. And it would, we won't have the full budget document to you guys. We're shooting, I mean, we talked about it today. The goal is the 19th.
Yeah.
But if we're going to end up with lots of program and staff changes, that just means we're, he has to redo it again.
Yeah, I think...
I think all the lines work.
Can we, talk to me about the 26th? We have a collaborative meeting.
Hopefully have a new date for it.
Oh, that's right.
You were going to give us an updated calendar of meetings, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think, I think we'll have to tell Maury, we cannot come to the FinCom on the 17th.
And so I should come to the building committee and not go to the FinCom?
I don't think you would need, unless you're just interested in coming to learn about more. I don't think you have to come.
But what, but do we even know their agenda?
Yes, we are on their agenda.
We're on their agenda.
Yeah, so I kind of feel like if you can go, it would be great for someone to be there.
Okay.
And you can just kind of report that we're working our way towards, we're working our way towards closing the gap. And we're feeling better about it. Okay.
Did they reach out to us, or did we just see their posting?
No, Maury emailed me this morning, and I think I...
I saw their posting. That's how I saw it.
It may not, it may just be work or reach out to them to find out if we're really substantively on the agenda, because they've got to know that nothing's changed since our, our last major meeting was with them about that.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're on the agenda as a necessary presentation. I think they're just going to be discussing it. And my thought was to be...
We had talked that whenever we appear on the agenda, we thought that somebody from Manchester should kind of just be in the room to report back.
Yeah.
Or answer any questions.
I will go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so finance committee...
Just any that we've got, just more for the camera. The committee meeting.
Oh, right.
It was on January 31st, or the third committee meeting for the school building project.
Yeah.
And Remco and I are going to PTO tomorrow morning. That was rescheduled from last week. If you want to come, come, but I...
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Finance committee, we are having the collaborative meeting on the 26th. And, but it's going to be moved, so we'll figure that one out. Communication Policy Subcommittee, it sounds like we have some policy stuff that we need to address.
Next.
So I'm wondering if we need to let Policy have its meeting and then Communication be a separate meeting, because you've got, you know, a list of stuff.
We can get back on the every other Tuesday.
I'm planning on Tuesday at noon.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
Oh, you are? Are you a yes?
I'm almost a yes. I just need to check a couple of things.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
Okay. And we just need to check, okay. And that's on Communication. Policy, if you guys could set something up, that'd be great. Okay. And negotiations, please tell me you have some good news.
We're off.
You have a meeting, right?
No.
We're moving... That's why we're moving that meeting.
Oh, great.
We have an eight-hour training with the team on...
Friday, January 26th.
Yeah, the 26th for the holiday.
Is that here?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a report. Pam, do you have anything?
Just two quick things with, with the snow. We got through the great, find that a few people, kind of random number, random people were not getting the phone call for the home district. So if you know, if you're searching up on Facebook, telling people what their principals know. So if you ever come across anyone who didn't get the call, they just need to make sure they connect their building secretary or principal so they can...
Do they also not get an email? The same people?
No, I think we have some people who have email in there, but not a phone number, or sometimes it goes to contact one versus contact two. So as long as Steve knows about, you can go in and figure out what's causing the glitch.
I also buy it on the app.
Yeah.
I also buy it on the app.
I'm not, which is good, because it serves the point, but... And somebody just have a wrong number. I mean, one digit could be off in the entering of the number and you didn't get the call. So, just to type the problem. And you'll see that we updated the Parent Education Forum series. We have a new date. We had a conflict with Robert Brooks, who was supposed to be here, actually, next Wednesday. And he's going to be here on the evening of March 7th. So we put that flyer up and out. It's out on social media. It's up on the website. It's every place we want it to be. It'll go into the cricket, and hopefully we'll get it into the tons.
And Robert Brooks is not David Brooks. Robert Brooks is...
Did I get it wrong?
No, I, no, because, yeah.
Raising resilient children is the theme.
And you also wanted to thank the facilities team for their handling of the snow, et cetera.
Yeah, that was an unexpected two-day event that came up very quick. And our team did a fantastic job. They have to come, and others don't. And between the cold ahead of it and digging us out of the storm, I know everyone really struggled keeping up, but our guys did a great job.
Quick question.
I want to thank them publicly. Yeah.
There was, I think, an article someplace about schools having to close, because the heating systems weren't adequate. So how are we doing in the elementary schools, in the schools?
One classroom at Memorial has been cold, and they're waiting on parts. And then Essex was slow to get going one morning, but then we got it up and running. So good. This building's been great. I would hope building's great. So it's good.
All right.
We haven't signed the warrants, just so we remember.
Oh, right. Sorry about that. So can I have a motion to accept, to accept the consent agenda?
So...
So that was urged, and it's given. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. And you had some questions about some items on the, did Avi answer them all?
I answered them in an email.
Did I, did I get that email?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was great. Thank you.
It was like the new, the new Almo.
I know.
I know.
I need the same ones to address now, just to go on the record, or are you good? Hold on. There was one, I thought, hang on, I'm chasing this one. Do you have to have Steve?
Was it correction?
Okay, well, this is it.
Was it the one that was 20 bucks instead of two bucks?
Oh, no. Avi, were there any ones that stood out that we need to know about? I...
No, and I tried to identify things. I think will stand out. So it's always nice when people let me know what you think they're looking at, so I can try to custom tailor my comments in the future. It was helpful.
You know, I'm always looking at everything.
Well, you know what? I like when people look at that, because it helps me to know that people are paying attention.
Great. Okay, public comments. Does anyone have any public comments there?
I have a question.
Sure.
So the property across the street, I think it's 41 School Street, is under agreement, if not sold at this point. They applied for a curb cut, cut, applications. They're going to put a driveway pretty much directly across the street.
Lincoln Street or School Street?
School Street.
So one in the corner right near the Arthidontis, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Wait.
Lincoln Street.
What did I say? Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, School Street. So yes, Lincoln Street.
Yep.
So they're going to add a driveway there, and they're going to have four cars. And so typically, at planning board meetings, people come and talk. So I didn't know who received it at the school, and they're not concerned, but I mean, it's between two crosswalks, and there's already congestion there. Like, no one had, did anyone, like, survey the safety concern?
Oh, because where do you buy those, you mean?
Yeah.
You had asked me the question of where's the time to go. We do get notifications from time to time. Sometimes we get them accurately and sent to the office. Not 100% of the time, it's possible it's received. I'd have to look into it and see.
I mean, those things are timely. I mean, it's come and gone. And we've, the school has missed their time period to comment, so I was just a little concerned.
To our knowledge, we didn't receive it.
It was certified mail. The school received it.
Do you know who...
It said Manchester Essex School District.
So it had the, the...
Who signed for it?
I don't know.
If you wouldn't mind checking that way there, we can check with that person and see who's mailbox is.
And it's possible that it came through, it might have been overseen. So it would be helpful to know.
Yeah, we can at least track down where we went off the track.
I mean, just that's so congested in the morning. I mean, I personally spoke up, but I voted. I just wanted more time to look into it. Usually, it happens in votes over two meetings, but they voted it without being a site visit. Usually, it's two meetings. But no one from the school district had any concern, and it was voted. So I'm, I'm a little concerned.
So it's four cars for one house, or it's going to be an apartment building?
It's a two-family at this point, but they subdivided that lot. So they're going to build another house on the far corner.
Ah.